I've never had such a big crowd like this, except when they had the trash, probably, right, Cassie?
I'll have to.
Yeah, absolutely.
You had to remind me?
[laughing] Called the meeting to order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. The Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is Pastor Trent here? Or someone from Christchurch? Okay, I heard he was just coming back from a trip, so he might not have made it. Okay, well, let's just bow our heads and have our moment of silence. Everyone can have a seat. There's a few seats around. If anybody in the back wants to sit, there's a few seats. There's two up here, there's one over there. Anybody wants to sit down? Okay. Roll call, please, Liz.
Mayor Kavanaugh.
Here.
Vice Mayor Tolles.
Here.
Councilmember Legay.
Here.
Councilmember Brown.
Here.
Councilmember LaCron.
Here.
Councilmember DePorter.
Here.
Councilmember Magazine.
Here.
Thank you. Okay, the next will be some comments from the outgoing council people and any of the public. If any of the public wants to say anything, you still have to fill out one of the forms in the back, okay? So go grab one if you have something to say. So this is for outgoing mayor and council members, and if you don't mind, I'd like to go first. Okay? I never go first, that's why it's unusual. I always let everybody else go first. Anyway, let's start with, a few weeks ago, the Fountain Hills Times ran my column where I talked about my goals and our accomplishments during my tenure as mayor in the last six and a half years. The column is also reprinted on my mayor's Facebook page. I would love for you to take time to read it. But tonight, I would like to confine my short speech to thank yous. First and always first, I thank God for bringing me to this place to serve my community. I thank my family, especially my husband and sons, for allowing me to miss a lot of family time, for their love, support, and understanding. They are always my rock. I've been blessed with a lot of friends in our beautiful hometown, and this job has brought more friendships, and I thank them all for their support and their vote of confidence through three elections. I want to especially thank some very close friends who I consider family. You know who you are. These special friends have always been an important part of my life, and I relied on them for support through some tough times and to celebrate with me the best of times. Thank you for always being there for me. Salute. I'm really going to miss the town staff. I know I wasn't technically one of them, but they welcomed me as if I were, made me feel at home in Town Hall, and included me in all their happy moments. I felt so special to be included in their lives. Their friendships I will treasure always. We are so fortunate to have such a wonderful staff. And Grady, being the leader, must take credit for that. His expertise, knowledge, and empathy have made him the ideal leader for this special staff. It has been a great privilege for me to work with Grady, a true professional in every sense of the word. I will miss our special lunches together, where we got to know each other so well that we became good friends. Two other staff members I would like to single out, who I worked with so closely. First, my very special executive assistant and dear friend Nancy Walter. Thank you, Nancy, for all the years we've been together, for all you've done for me. I could not have asked for anyone as wonderful as you are, not only such a delightful person to work with, but the most efficient assistant anyone could ever hope for. Your friendship will always be special to me. The other staff member I want to thank is Heather Ware, our volunteer coordinator and my director for the Mayor's Youth Council, and my dear friend. In 2012, Heather took charge of recruiting students. We started with just a few, but every year since then, we've had over 20 students participating in the Mayor's Youth Council. Heather's unique talent has enriched so many student lives. I can't thank her enough for helping to make the Mayor's Youth Council a successful and fun group. Now, to my fellow council members, it's been a privilege to work with you. While each of us came from different backgrounds, had different perspectives and goals in mind, in the end, we came together as a team. We accomplished a lot, and I want to thank you all for your unselfish service to the community. You've given up family time, maybe missed a vacation or a special event, taken time off from your jobs, missed a kid's baseball game, or maybe two. On behalf of the community and myself, I thank you for giving up a big part of your lives to serve our community. It's been an honor and a privilege to have worked with all of you. My thanks would not be complete without adding a special thank you to all the captains, deputies, and firefighters who I've worked with these past years and have gotten to know as friends. You all are an important part of our town family, and each and every day, you give so much more than is required for your job. Thank you for your dedication and your service to the people of Fountain Hills. Who could ask for more than those willing to lay down their lives for us? I also want to thank the Chamber of Commerce for all their great support of our business community, and our service organizations and veterans for always being so generous to our town. With that, I wish the new mayor and all the council members, new ones and those staying on, good luck. Always remember that what our residents cherish the most and what sets us apart from all the rest of the valley is our unique and special quality of life. I ask God's blessing on you and our wonderful hometown of Fountain Hills. Thank you. And now, whoever wants to go first for current...
Nick.
Yes, Nick?
That's a... She said to me before I sat down, she's like, "Did you write stuff down so you don't ramble?" And I did not, so after that, well, well, well done, so prepare for a little bit of rambling. I just really, I just wanted to thank everybody, you know, my friends, family, neighbors, for the opportunity to serve this very unique community. It's been a really special four years for me doing this, and I've really, really enjoyed every moment of it. First, I want to thank my family, starting with my parents, Don and Ruth, who, you know, really set the foundation for me to... Foundation of service and kindness, so that it was in me from day one to sort of be thinking about these things. And I'm proud to have them as neighbors right down the street, as well as my in-laws, Kathy and Austin. We're a large tribe in a very small neighborhood, so it's fun to have everybody around there. And then, of course, my children. Jack, he's the one who I've missed, a few baseball games and a few things, but I won't be missing anymore. He is awesome. He's gonna be eight soon, loving school. And then, my baby girl, Abby, who's four now, but when I started, she was just not even one. So she was... The pictures were really cute, and they both helped me win elections, so I don't know if I'm having any more kids, so I don't know if there's any more elections. I'd also just really want to thank my beautiful wife, Adrienne. She has been so supportive through all this. She has been, you know, just an awesome mom and just support for me as we work on life together, so... And then finally, I would turn to the staff and my colleagues, and just really thank them for the opportunity to serve with you all. It's been a really great honor to do so. And second, what the mayor says about our public safety team, Chief Ott, Captain Brandon Mart, I mean, just top-notch, and, you know, good people who end up really becoming good friends as well. My advice coming out is, you know, be... Just be nice to each other. These are things that I would tell my kids to do, by the way. Be nice to each other, communicate. Things that I think are important is to just bring that back, is for people just to be more together. And finally, I'll just leave you with, you know, something I saw from a note that former President Bush wrote to Bill Clinton as the administration's changed. It was a really cool note. I'm sure some of you saw it on that evil social media, but it said, "We'll be rooting for you." So that really resonated with me, because we'll all be rooting for the new council behind the scenes, and we're excited about the next chapter. Thank you.
Thank you all for being here this evening. As the mayor said, it's been a while since we've had such a... Well, actually, we've had crowds large before, but not everyone was smiling like you guys are smiling out there, so that's awesome. Appreciate it. You know, I've been on council for 12, and Bob Burns always reminds me 12 and a half years, and when I started thinking about putting down a few notes, I literally had a page for each year that I served, but I'm not going to do that to you tonight. So I'll be very brief. Yeah, wow. Serving the community of Fountain Hills as an elected official for the past 12 years has been an honor and a privilege. Having the opportunity to work with exceptional mayors, council members, town managers, town staff, residents, and the business community has been a very rewarding experience. I believe it's fair to say that much has been accomplished, and collectively, we have made Fountain Hills a better community, knowing well that there's always room for improvement. To so many, thank you for your support and endorsement over the years, especially my wife, Janet, my two daughters, Kristen and Marissa, who couldn't be here this evening, out of the country. And I'm certainly grateful to have had the opportunity to serve the town of Fountain Hills, which my family and I have called home for over 25 years. And to our new mayor and council, I wish you all great success in moving our extraordinary town forward. Thank you.
Okay, now we will hear from our current council members, those who are still staying. Would like to go first?
Certainly, Mayor. I'd love to go first. Thank you. So I would like to thank you for the opportunity to work with you. It's been fun. It started out with Never Brown, and then we worked together really well. Thank you. I think you've really done an excellent job.
Thank you.
Henry?
[noise]
Thanks. You mentored me, you advised me, you led me, and you've brought so much to this council. When we had our e-sessions on hiring new employees, your corporate abilities to ask the right questions, after we got done embarrassing ourselves asking questions, you always had the right questions to bring the entire team together and lead us to the right decision. So thank you so much for all the efforts that you've given to this council, especially me. Thank you. The only thing wrong with Nick is he was never here. It's been a very quick four years, Nick. I can recall being in my office and sitting across the table from you, deciding if you were going to run or not. And I'm sure glad you've been here. You bring a calmness to our council and always good advice. Thanks.
Ellen, I'll finish.
Ellen?
Welcome, everyone. Good to see so many of you. I have to admit that this evening is a bit nostalgic for me. I've been involved in government politics for going on 50 years now. This will be the fourth time I've been sworn into office. Given advancing age, I suspect there won't be another one. It has been a tremendous career, and I thank all of the citizens for helping me achieve that. I want to express my sincere thanks and admiration to my colleagues. While there have been times wherein we've had fairly heated debates, there has never been a time, once a decision has been made, when all is said and done, that we weren't able to put aside the disagreements, shake hands, and move on. And I think that's absolutely critical in this community, in any community. In my view, this is essential to good governing. We all have but one thing in mind, and that is what is in the best interest of our citizens. That is the only way we can hope to make progress as a community. I have no doubt that that spirit of cooperation will continue with the new council. I want to give a special shout-out to our staff. They're the glue that hold things together. Given the significant reduction in staff and the strains on our budget, they have repeatedly gone above and beyond. And last, but certainly not least, our citizens have, in many cases, pitched in to help Fountain Hills to be the most beautiful town in the valley, and perhaps the state. It's been a tremendous honor to be a small part of that success. Thank you.
Sherry?
Thank you, Mayor. I want to say to you, Mayor Kavanaugh, and council members, Nick DePorter and Henry Legay, to you particularly, but certainly everyone, since I've been on the council, has been very welcoming. But the three of you especially, thank you so much for showing me the ropes and making me feel welcome. I'm the new kid on the block for just a few more minutes. That's it. But I want to thank you for your service. It's been a pleasure to get to know you and to serve with you for the short time that I have. I wish you the best in your future endeavors, whatever they are. Thank you.
Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. I want to save you for the last, but definitely not least. First, I want to thank everyone for being here tonight and recognizing the council members that are leaving, and our mayor, and also for welcoming our new mayor and our new council members, which I'm confident are going to do a fantastic job moving forward. I want to just recognize Councilman Henry Legay, my neighbor and someone who I deeply respect. You don't get to see what happens behind closed doors, but I will tell you this. Henry is a wealth of knowledge for what has been happening in this town, and 12-plus years of knowledge is a real loss to this council. I respect his experience, as Councilman Brown said, with human resources and dealing with a lot of those issues that we have to deal with behind closed doors. He's brought just a tremendous professionalism to this council, and he will be very deeply missed. So I hope you stay involved and continue your council, because I highly respect you. So thank you. And with that, I have your pin that I'm going to give to you as the entire council and staff. This is a beautiful pin from Sami's Fine Jewelry, gold with a beautiful diamond, and that's in honor of all of what you've served for this community. I'm going to have your wife come up here and pin you, because, you know, one thing that is really important to recognize, and it was brought up here, is that the families really sacrifice a lot for the time that it takes to be on this council. So let's have your wife pin you.
I may never see it again. There's a diamond on it.
Don't stick in.
So now we have Councilman Nick DePorter. Nick, you are the nicest guy on this council. Behind, like I say, you don't know what happens behind closed doors, but Nick is a calm and very patient man, and he's done an amazing job behind the scenes and also, obviously, on the council. One thing that no one knows until this moment, in this room possibly, is that Nick is a fraternity brother of mine. So Phi Gamma Delta, Fiji, I graduated a different school, but we have a lot of in-common values that come with that brotherhood. So I can't say enough about you. You are so involved in the community, with your family. You've been at every event that I'm at, and with the kids, that we have that in common. We have kids, and you've just been a pleasure to work with. So I am going to miss you on this council, as I'm sure all of us will, and wish you the very best. Nick was also, just his background, everybody brings something different, but Nick, with his LinkedIn background and networking and knowing computers and systems and how to promote things, he's just done a lot of very good things for the town that you don't get recognized enough, but you do tonight. So thank you, Nick. And can I have your wife come on up too, please?
Okay, kids, you gotta kind of do two... Yeah, two things at once here. Okay, now you... Okay, wait, wait. Okay, stop. Again, okay. Clear directive here. Okay, now pin.
What do you want to pin? Your son? Your grandsons? Nobody's here? No.
Ouch, here.
Who's in board yet?
Okay, and last, but definitely not least, is our mayor, Linda Kavanaugh. And Linda, let me just start with some flowers for you. And these flowers are from the council staff and everyone here. Recognize all that you've done. Linda, six and a half years as mayor of the town of Fountain Hills is a huge accomplishment, and I think one of the longest, or the longest, of all the mayors. Is that correct, right? So that's to be recognized. I've known Linda since 2002, served with you on many boards in town, the Chamber of Commerce Board, and River of Times Museum, and you name it. But Linda has been a uniting force of this council, and it's amazing when people talk about division in government. Well, to be honest with you, this council has worked so well together, I feel that we have such synergy, and I can't remember one time that behind the scenes we've ever had an argument that got to any level of someone really being upset about it. And Linda's always been the one who has steered the ship in the right direction and has been a true professional in every aspect of running for being mayor, which pays a lot of money to be mayor of Fountain Hills. So now you get your...
My reward.
Your reward. So you get the pin, and I just asked Linda, I said, "Is your husband here?" And he, as you know, he is very busy in government as well, so he is not here, and so I'd be honored to pin this on you, okay?
You can't guess, sir.
I can't guess, sir. No.
For those of you who aren't aware, this lovely lady who's taking the photographs is former councilperson Cassie Hanson.
Wait, look this way for a minute.
So with that, final comments. Really looking forward to working with Mayor Ginny Dickey and our new council members, and look forward to another great couple years and accomplishing lots for the town of Fountain Hills. So thank you very much. Linda, I have one more thing for you. Because this might come in handy, you know. A special gift for you, and enjoy...
I have so much.
Can't drink it now.
I have two to drink. Yeah, down here.
Okay, I'd like to, at this time, ask our Judge Milton to please come forward for the official swearing-in of the new council and new mayor.
Were there any...
Public.
Excuse me, Madam Clerk, were there members of the public that had something to say first, before we move on?
Does anyone put in a...
I do have one speaker card from Enrique Melendez, and I know it was shown as call to the public. I don't know if it's for this or for actual call to the public, so... Yes? Okay.
Good evening, Mayor Kavanaugh, incoming Mayor Dickey, Vice Mayor Tolles, council members and staff. I'm here tonight speaking in a dual role. The first one is as Executive Director of the Diplomatic Service in the state of Arizona, which is comprised of 37 nations. And the other role is as a former council member that served, was privileged to serve in the old building in the Middle Ages or during the Crusades. Thanksgiving Day was 11 days ago, but I think it's appropriate for me, at this time, to once again thank God, as all of us are doing, for the help they have given each and every one of us and our families. And so tonight is the evening that I, probably the last time I'll come before a council meeting, but I'm privileged to be here, and I appreciate the patience that you have. Mayor Kavanaugh, I know you've served under very, very difficult times. I don't come to council meetings often, as you know, but I follow you in the newspaper and so forth, and I met with you many times during your terms in office, as I have, with every mayor. So congratulations, and thank you for your service. A couple of words about Henry Legay. 12 and a half years ago, Henry came to my house, and he said to me, you know, he said, Rick, he said, "Should I run for council?" And I said, "Without a doubt, you should." And the 12 years of service that you've given us have been excellent. Thank you. And then the other gentleman that I want to mention is Dennis Brown. He's got over 20 years of service in our community. Thank you, Dennis. And then lastly, Councilmember DePorter, I want to congratulate you, because after all these years, Arizona State beat my Trojans. Some of the comments that I have with respect to the movement of Fountain Hills lean towards international. I know that we have three councils, one in the audience, a council of Poland, Bogomel Horchim, and then we have a council of the Netherlands, and he is very interested in bringing businesses to Arizona, and looking at Fountain Hills with delegations from the Netherlands, and I'm hopeful that the town manager will proceed and work with him, so maybe we can get one or two businesses in the empty buildings we have. The... Wearing my diplomatic hat, it's been very... Much pride prize for me, and I want to announce that yesterday, the State Department called me, and it's just brand-new, that the Chairman of the Board of Supervisors, Steve Trukery, who's our supervisor, was named Council of Estonia, so he'll be representing Estonia. And the last thing I want to mention is, in 1991, I had the privilege of sitting at a table by accident while living in San Francisco with President H. Bush, and he knew I came from El Salvador and mentioned that he had been to the country three times. And he pulled me over, and he said, "You have a very..." And he pulled me over and he said, you have a very poor country. The one thing that you need to do with the government and the people is bring a word that is not used anymore, it's a seven-letter word that you, all of you have heard me talk about, it's called respect. And I try to do that in my time behind the dais, as well as with the diplomatic service. So it's a big loss, and we also feel sadly that we lost a good friend, Larry Mois, this past week. So gentlemen and ladies, thank you very much. I wish you the very best with the incoming council. What I would recommend is you try to keep civility and, and keep the volatility of anger as minimized as possible. So once again, thank you very much.
Judge Milton, come on up, please, and you are dismissed of your duties. Yeah, I'd like to invite Ginny, Ginny Dickey up front, and David Spelitch, come on up, and Mike Sharno, please come on up all at the same time.
And your significant others.
And your significant others.
Do solemnly swear-
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States-
Support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws of the state of Arizona.
Constitution of laws and Arizona.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same-
And I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And defend them against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
And defend them against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
And that I will faithfully and impartially-
And I will faithfully and impartially-
Discharge the duties of the office-
Discharge the duties of the office.
Of mayor and councilmembers.
Mayor.
Oh, councilmembers. According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
Okay, Mayor Dickey, our first order of business here is to give you flowers.
Appreciate that very much, young man.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate that very much, young man. So we have a very nice short agenda, I was gonna say menu, for us here. The first thing I'd like to do is ask if any of the councilmembers newly sworn in or otherwise would like to say anything at all. Councilman Sharno?
I'll go first. Well, thanks everybody for coming, and I just want to echo a lot of some of the comments that were made earlier about the outgoing mayor and councilmembers. I mean, between the three of them, we're looking at 22-plus years of combined public service, so that's pretty amazing if you think about that. And, you know, to me, it's something to be definitely commended for in this day of age, and when so many people just hide behind keyboards and monitors and that type of thing. But as one citizen said, I'm grateful for their willingness to lead all these years and to take that risk of being criticized and judged and all that kind of stuff. While I can't say I agree with all of their individual decisions over the years, such as the nature of representative government, right? But we can all agree that you stepped up over the years and led by example. You are now part of local history, and will always be remembered for your dedication to public service and to the town of Fountain Hills. So for that, I thank you. And can I add some other stuff?
Of course.
I, I, I just wanted to add that the swearing in tonight, I, the Bible I used is this Bible from my dad, and it's dated 1943, and it's, he would have been 13 years old when he received it, and I think is when he got confirmed. And I don't know, I don't think you ever read it, but that's a whole different story, but, so anyway, that leads me to also thanking God for leading me here, and my beautiful wife Brenda, and my treasurer Jared Sterns, and all those who voted for me. I appreciate all the support and getting me up here to do this crazy job. And I'm particularly honored to be placed in Henry's seat location. Thank you, Cassie. Although after 12 and a half years, the seat might be a little, I might need to put in a purchase order for a new seat, chair, I'm just, just saying. But I don't think the town council has seen this much transition this rapidly since Fountain Hills Incorporated 29 years ago. I know all of us newbies up here feel we are up to the challenge, and I for one look forward to working with my fellow councilmembers and staff as we tackle some mighty big issues in the next few years. And that's why I think it's important we look ahead to 2019 and beyond. We all know that 2018 was a difficult year when it comes to local politics. So it's incumbent on us to learn from the past and look ahead, not with rose-colored glasses, but with a realistic sense that we need to channel our community passion in the most unified way that we can. And of course, the circumstances were much different, but in closing, I'd like to share a small quote from what Abraham Lincoln said during his inaugural address in 1861. Quote, "We are not enemies, but friends. We must not be enemies. Though passion may have strained, it must not break our bonds of affection. The mystic chords of memory stretching from every battlefield and patriot grave to every living heart and hearthstone all over this broad land will yet swell the chorus of the union when again touched, as surely they will be, by the better angels of our nature," unquote. So it's my hope this evening that a swell of chorus residing in this broad land of Fountain Hills is indeed started, that we will all be touched by the better angels of our nature, and that we will proceed with open minds, willing hearts, and sound reasoning. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Okay, Councilwoman Spelitch, he said he wasn't gonna do this.
I didn't prepare any remarks today, but I just wanted to thank my wife, who has put up with me for this long election process. And I'd like to also thank my brothers and sister in blue, representatives of all the retired Chicago police officers, and guys that helped me get elected and walk the neighborhoods, and Jerry Friddell, who I also ran with, and Bob and Chris Dur. I want to especially thank my sister, who's not here tonight, she lives in Wisconsin. In 2009, she brought us to Fountain Hills after my father had passed away. My wife and I took care of my dad the last six years of his life from Alzheimer's, and we were devastated by his loss. And came to Fountain Hills as a break, and I've never been here, and I knew the first two days that I was here that I wanted to live here the rest of my life when I retired from the department. And I just absolutely love the town. I won't end on a sad note, but a funny note is when Vice Mayor Tolles was complimenting Nick DePorter on being the nicest guy on the council, I leaned over to my wife and I said, when I leave this council, do you think they'll ever describe me as that? And she said, no way. So, at least, she's a realist. So, thank you for everybody that supported me in the election, and I'm proud to be on the council, and I hope to do the best job that I possibly can. Thank you.
Well, I have a couple of things to say. Thank you all, of course, for coming. I wanted to congratulate Councilman David Spelitch and Allen Magazine for being reelected, and of course, for Mike Sharno. That was very poetic, and we look forward to, to hearing you speak through the years. I also look forward to us joining the dedicated councilmembers LaCrone and Brown and Tolles, and along with our professional staff, in serving the entire community, and serving you. That's what we're here for. We've already had some activities together, and I sense a very good feeling and upbeat spirit of partnership and teamwork, and I look forward to that. Along those lines, of course, I wanted to thank Councilman Leget and DePorter and Yates and Mayor Kavanaugh for all of the time, and as they mentioned, the energy that they devoted, the effects that, that does have on your family life, and the personal sacrifices that they willingly signed up to do. They each brought their unique strengths and their talents, their interests and their accomplishments, all for the good of the town, and we appreciate that. Speaking of time, we now know Henry is the longest-serving councilman in Fountain Hills' history, councilperson. We were both elected in 2006. At the time, as, as you've heard tonight, I appreciated his insights and his logic, and also, though, his kindness. It always came through. I hope that those with such great knowledge and experience will remain committed and participating in our town, and don't change your phone numbers on us or anything like that, because we'll be relying on you. We've met creative people throughout these months with great ideas, exciting ideas, volunteers, who bring all kinds of talents from their work lives and all of their service, working on our vision and our strategic plans, projects such as those that are starting to come forth from the Leadership Academy, and so many more people that are involved and care about our community. I sense a will to do things that are unique and special, things that are well-suited for Fountain Hills. Of course, though, we have to realize that we're faced with the reality of the challenges of, of protecting our assets, and of course, maintaining and improving our public safety, which is in fact our number-one responsibility, I think we would all agree. So we want those who are in, within our boundaries, though, to, to be well-served. We want them to be happy to live here, we want making, we want them to visit here, we want working here to be pleasant and inviting. And I have confidence that as, as we all work together, not just up here, but in the entire community, that we can find a good balance. If we all pitch in, we have to fight cynicism, you know, and, and move forward together, seek out, and then help communicate the facts, we'll all be better for that. A good first step to maybe doing that would be if, as many of you could come to our retreat, which is gonna be on February 7th, almost all day long, but it's a great way to gain a better understanding of how the town works. It will help further define our priorities, and we'll get firsthand look and presentations from all of our departments, public safety on down and on over, broad picture of our town. We'll get those agendas out when they're ready, and, I don't know, I didn't say anything to Mike yet, but if we can possibly videotape it, I know it's hard to do because we're, it's not conducive to that, you know, sitting in the, we don't sit up here like this, we sit down, but maybe we can do something like that, because it's very eye-opening and very important as we move forward. You know, we're knocking on the door of the 50th anniversary of our fountain, believe it or not, 1970, and 30 years of being an incorporated community, which was the end of 1989. So we'll be honoring, we'll have a couple of years here to honor the past and to celebrate the present, and imagine the future with shared goals that everybody participates in. This'll take a lot of work, of course, and cooperation for us to succeed, but I think we're all pretty motivated up here and within the community. I want to thank you so much for giving us this opportunity to serve. I want to thank my family, my parents, I keep thinking about that, and I knew this was gonna happen, but we, we, they came to this community in the 70s, and I think my sisters, we've all had totally different participation in this town, but in a way that shows our commitment and our love for it, and our desire to make it a wonderful place for everybody's kids as it was for ours. So with that, I will stop. And could we please have a roll call? Liz, the first roll call. Appreciate it. Thank you. Present here.
Vice Mayor Tolles?
Here.
Councilmember Sharno?
Here.
Councilmember Brown?
Here.
Councilmember Magazine?
Here.
Councilmember LaCrone?
Here.
Councilmember Spelitch?
Here.
Thank you. So our item, next item is the consent agenda. Just a reminder that items that are listed on a consent agenda are considered routine, and if any councilmember or member of the public at any time would like to have one further discussed, we would remove it and put it on the regular agenda. So if I don't hear any objections, we have five items on the consent agenda. Do we have a motion to approve?
No.
And a second?
Second.
And we'll do a roll call vote on that, please.
Mayor Dickey?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Tolles?
Aye.
Councilmember Brown?
Aye.
Councilmember Sharno?
Aye.
Councilmember Magazine?
Aye.
Councilmember LaCrone?
Aye.
Councilmember Spelitch?
Aye.
Thank you. We have one item on our regular agenda, which is consideration of canceling meetings on holidays and approving annual meeting schedule. Town manager Grady Miller?
Well, Madam Mayor, I just wanted to bring to your attention, we might have missed the call to the public, so we might want to just see if there's anybody-
Oh, I'm so sorry about that.
Were there any, okay, just wanted to make sure.
Oh, okay, thank you.
I apologize.
Thank you, sorry about that.
No, not at all. So before you tonight, in the past, we would request the council to consider their council schedules. What you have before you is a draft schedule. We worked with the mayor-elect at the time to see if, if this was gonna work for what she thought the council would want to do. So one of the things that you have before you is the anticipated schedule for next year. This'll be the first time that the council, if, if you adopt it, you've adopted it for the whole 12 months in advance. What we are, the mayor had suggested that we have- What we are, the mayor had suggested that we have maybe perhaps a meeting in August because she had heard concerns in the past when the council didn't meet during the month of August. So what we have suggested is since the League of Cities and Towns is holding their annual conference, which most of the time the council members like to keep open and like to attend that, so that is the week of the 20th. So we're suggesting that perhaps to give you as long of a break as possible between the June, the last meeting in June until the August meeting, that you maybe perhaps consider a August 13th meeting. So for the whole month of August, you would have one meeting and it'd be August 13th. Of course, if the council has any, if they want to keep the schedule as it is, that's certainly up to you. So it is your business meetings and you can do with it what you like.
Thank you. Is there any discussion?
Mayor from May?
Councilman Brown?
I think it's wise that we meet one time in August. This past August, I felt we had some issues that needed to be discussed and we did not have the meeting until September and I think the August meeting would be a good thing to have.
Thank you.
With that, I make the motion to approve that schedule.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any more discussion? Were there any speaker cards on this item?
And Mayor, just to let you know, this is again the schedule that you adopt and you can always add or take off meetings if you feel there's not relevance to it. We try to work around the holidays and remove meetings during the holidays, but if you of course wish to have a meeting or you request a meeting at a council meeting for a future meeting, we'll always add meetings, so.
Thank you. And I imagine we might have some extra budget meetings in there too in April or May. Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Next is council discussion and direction to the town manager. Do we have any items? No? And then summary of council requests, report on recent activities by mayor, council, or manager. Not yet, huh?
A little soon.
Got some awesome cookies outside. Great, there's nothing to report there. Before we adjourn, I said I joked with Sherri earlier that it's not likely that we'll see another agenda like this where we approve four liquor licenses and a vacation schedule. So enjoy it while we have it. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So move.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you all very much.